Okay, I want to welcome each and every one here, all the honourable members. My co-chair, Honorable Wano from the Eastern Cape, permanent delegate from the NCOP. And I want to most welcome the VIPs that are sitting at the back. We're here for you and you can ask all your questions today on health, social development and home affairs. I want to introduce, ask the panel to introduce themselves. I can start right on my left hand side first. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Eni McComby, councillor for community services in the Edin district municipality and the chair for the district health council.
Good afternoon, I'm Albert Fritz, I'm the provincial minister for social development in the Western Cape.
Goeie midag, Molweni. My name is Fatima Choha, I'm the deputy minister of home affairs.
Thank you. Honorable Tao is just outside, busy with an interview and he will be back soon, I think about in 10 minutes. I'm Honorable Marie, I'm the provincial, I'm from the province of the Western Cape and I'm the chairperson for community development, that's health and social development. Me and my co-chair, we will alternate and sometimes she will take the chair and sometimes I will take the chair. You can speak in the language of your choice. So you can Afrikaans praten, you can Engels praten, any can Korsa praten, even if there's some Sutu, you can also speak that. We're going to ask the members of the public, our VIP guests. You can, I think you can come forward if you want to do, want to ask a question. We're going to take five people at a time and each one has two minutes to state and ask his question. So thank you, I'm going to hand over to my co-chair. Thank you so much.
Hey, Molweni. Tingu mzwandile tibela, tifuma yethi mbalitu eh George.
Goeie midag, ekas mzwandile ekom ayithi mbalitu eh Fan George.
Eh, cheng baba njebe bonagendu mmm tu opila no kubase kubonka boni.
As people see, I am having, I am disabled, I do not see properly.
Ekas gestremd, kan i goth sini?
Eh, di pete imiba imibi, aminama departmentama bi ni, kokoda o social development.
I am responsible for two departments, social development.
Kokoda kalanda, kalandi tibulele.
Ekas vlenwurlik vertweer departament, maatskapelijke ontwikkeling.
Eh, tiza okala kalandi tibulele, usseke lampati swa we mfuundo.
Let me first thank the deputy minister for education.
Kuti, ah young minister for honerwiis.
Kokoba u, u usseke lampati swa, utete ezizindo ben tiza uzteeta. Kokoba ayonan da oben ngamileku yo, kukui mfuundo yabanda banaboni yo.
The deputy minister has addressed exactly the issues that I was about to speak about, I was to speak about people who are not in a normal position of seeing.
Ah, die ah young minister het precies o die zaken gesprood wat ek so geoperet. Het gesprood oer mensen wat neen die rechte posities angestel word nie.
Oye wa, wa balula umba, o ba lega kuluguti otu, ben samalung selle we pray. I pray machine, plaske ne, ne computer, emshoes ne George, abanda banaboni yo.
He has mentioned two issues that they are in a way of getting a brain machine computers for us disabled people.
Het van twersake gesprood, het gesprood van een pray machine voor ons mensen met gestremde jere.
Eh, tingu mmm tu o, o se le kukavari xa ama shumi, ama tanda atu minyaga ndipila.
I am now about to turn 60 years of age.
Ekas no amper, ses toh yaodot?
Oko da le, kay mfuundo ndina 11 years old.
Ode, ode.
Yes.
Molweni ban bakuti, si antela kanchale panzi, apa si funa imimuzo. Eh ngale, uli antoko, ibegwe apa yagwa social development, eh ngale ku zinto zaguwa home affairs. Di antela genan botoli kani sinati sen officials apesants, mmm tu magabuze, no, uli anto kutetwanga ayu asen fawomin, because apa xasa bekumi buzo yagwa health, likla shalay yoke ngoku, usasa bekumi buzo yagwa social development. Si antela indo, in ngale mo, na waga home affairs. Eh, di atoli sakaku lugu mama beni ngoku, krebela, bo na ntsibekala beni, ndilabe kwin. So, in den ze gla lo ndi peti envelope apa, enen doyonge, emayela ne information, o basne scolo sabanda banaboni yo, apes Southern Cape, eh sinaga si vuliwe. So galogo pa ndino chi ga ngoku, ti nga itete angalo ndi tete ngai ite ndina yo. Ah, i, i abalulu zlili zega lo ndoba ndibela apa. In deba le gla, ndoba lo ubu kobam apa, i specialist bete ngo, iye gwa kaban duana base, ba la college, betete iminiyonge, be pindapindi nduwe anye, kufalewa tinabana nengadi, eh 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 tifrenz, unalebebe ite. So, itolomata, okay, sure. Kedada dam. I am carrying a mandate here, I'm having a mandate. And our time had been consumed earlier by allowing the scholars to speak in length on their own issues. And therefore we did not have enough time to address our matters that affects, that we need to address now.
Ons nie genug tijd gehad om die zaken te oper wat ons eigenlijk bou op er nie.
So di ato, sake mama mdu ngoku krebela, kula achu. Eh, mandi yage nguklenda, oge atetagu yo mama, tisa atetagu angalam mfuundo. U education wa laper George, oye wan refeshela, kwey talalale departmentuma mama tetagu yo. Because u, u, u education, uteyena, abanda bakula yo, cheng abanda banaboni yo, aba foli shipaga education. Saabe is scolo se tusi register shwe, anda, i blind person. Amini blind person. So ngoku yena was refeshela, ngoku mister, mrs Peterson, wa gaga social development. Kamandike social development, gema mama, we are foli sake ngoku apa.
We had been referred to Ms Peterson of the social development section to address our issue. And myself being here, as I am a blind person, I think I should also address and bring my issues here too.
Ek dang akme tukma saka operi vanach as a blonde person.
Eh, since I tete ndine wa rekwa, dage ku baba sendi pa lilele ndo, tiza wii, tiza wii, kritise la pa, ku, 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 kuseke lampati swa.
I am going to say this although I am a little bit bothered now, but I have prepared what I was about to say, I've written it down, I think I will hand it in there by the deputy minister.
Kokwa dage, indo eyentungu yo, na indo okoba, from 20 years ago.
Nevertheless, 20 years ago.
Abanda banaboni yo ben gakatelele, ganga mayela nimfuundo.
All people did not look after blind persons in regard to education.
Is fundi swa esko yo apa, aske stinguba, abanda banaboni yo naboba ngabanduba yapiila. So i ngage ngunu kutilo ndo, oba, na kaufila kwez office, utaube kumtimbua koo, kufunwe mmm tu, o, 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 o ngapa kua koo, tenka bena mes.
Education is in the way.
Ode, can I have your attention please? You've only got two minutes and you must conclude your question please.
Okay, okay. Apo ke beni za uktele uneto konage, is scolo nje masis asfula, u education, gaske eto kwanage, a, asineti segengoku, for baga, akwa zusneti, sa, aba fun debetis na plus minus 90, yaba fun abaredi, ukali sekpele ngwale nyanga.
As the school is gonna be opened, we ask for the, from the education department to pay attention to us. We already have about 90 scholars that should be attended to. I thank you.
Da gaan oes school open word en ek wil graag die aandacht daarop vestig dat ons al reeds nergent of schooliere het wat geret is om in te skrijf.
Bye danke, ek dink dit is meer honerwiis vraag, maar in din minister Fritz wil antwoord. Thank you.
I tried to work out what exactly the issue is. I think something the gentleman did raise was the issue of disabilities in general, but I don't know whether there's a specific issue that you would have liked to address in terms of disabilities. Um, I, I know he got a piece of paper that he's gonna hand in and we're looking forward to actually reading the paper so that one can see what we can do in practical terms. Thank you.
Ek weet nie precies wat die persoon vou op er nie. Ek weet dit gedoen met gestremde jere, maar ek is blij dat hij gescrewe voorlegging gaan doen en hij kan het in aandacht en ons zal daaran aandacht geheer.
Niya kataze la ndi azika nyaganya, indo tete angayo, kota ke ndine temba lokba, uba ungenisile, oguk palileyo, kauve la kukta ke ogoku teta yo, zen goko ndipendule, si choli se kanye, kuo mongo, wom kye be.
Bye danke, yenge verder, persoon met vrawel, vraag.
Goeie midag.
Skies toh kan eva mai ned se wie i is? Bye danke.
Goeie midag amal, ekas Cecilia Doh van, van Juniendael. Ek het eigenlijk ver education ooggekom, maar ek is even gesond het word. So ek wil graaf ver midag weet, ek het gewa ri minister ga nie wees, maak sien hij is nog yene. So ek wil graaf weet. Ons, eh, da was misbesluit, ga nie outsourcing wees sien. En deze is het, en bij ons, bij die kleine hospitaal, kia ne rural area, is het contracte, mensen wat die contracte uitgehe, alle betaal die arme werk is 15 rand per hier om die werk te doen. Die schoonmaker poste is nou analege gehe, alle het getenderd om het te doen. En ek danki, dit is wat die government het gesee, alle moet wegdoen met die, met die brokers. Normale is nou reeds in en namelijk se, die, die verpleegskolen is, baye diir. Hiis een een outsourcing waarin onze kinders moet kom. Alle kan i dit bekostig nie. Nou moet alle eeen jaar in eeen jaar doen en zo gaan het aan. Daas die beerse beskikbaar voor alle nie. En alle kan i zo angani. Zo, nou moeten alle net misski, jaftje jaar alle het geld gehad om dit te gaan doen. Damne alle weekom sida so Juniendael, voor alle week biekje geldke gerenereert om verder te gaan. En namelijk ook graaf vra, die escort, die nighters wat onder famsa weer, kan i staat die alle inneem nie. Daai mensen doen een goeie job en alle wordt ma 3000 rand betaal die NGOs, wat baye min is. Alle gaan i zo angani. En ons moet, eh, eh, rurele lawens is, wordt net aan die sisters en die doctors betaal. Ons weer samen op die bissi se goth, jy gaan pi ok da, wa di, wa di, 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 di sester moet gaan pi, ma jy kree nie die rurele lawens sien. Dat is goed wat de mens seer maag, want onze government net gesee, alle gaan i die reikers nog reiker maak. Zo wat, wat alle nou doen is, die reikers wordt nou net nog reiker. Zo ons kan i, zo angani. En akokwa die meneseset die gesprood, dat alle as upblief, eh, 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 verrassingsbesuk in Juniendael, world school kom, moet kom doen. Meneses eendje ma shoye kan moet kom to da so, ek danki zalle gaan artke nie. Zo la alle dat si dakon kom, kom kikbat gaan naan. Maar ons gaan onze, onze goed wat ons gebranget gaan ons a achterin gehe. Baye danke.
Baye bye danke.
Ja, um, we were promised that at clinics there wouldn't be any subcontracting, but there has now been substantive subcontracting and that is a problem for us.
Thank you. Danke, kan ik ons daar, persoon kreeg, you can ask, you can ask your question?
Eh, tingu Kaswell Mangonyama.
Wait, just tell me where are you now, okay? What is your name? Just introduce yourself, thank you.
Eh, ik am alam gu Kaswell Mangonyama.
My name is Kaswell Mangonyama.
Eh, di diabetic chronic.
I am a diabetic chronic patient.
Ekas chronisch diabetes.
Di nomlenze omye.
One of my legs had been amputated.
Di kwelebe wheelchair.
My ein beern is al afgeset en ek gebruik rollstool.
Ava ogok tala, go 2013. Daan niwa i, i wheelchair, gu, gu ma o tabire Lamini.
Firstly, in 2010, I was given a wheelchair.
2013.
2013.
By mama tabire Lamini.
In 2013, ek et ak rollstool gekrei, di sester Lamini.
Di thesendi kodugile na low wheelchair, kwa fika umasta Delport, apa yagwa social services, aso tatar na low wheelchair.
Once I'd already gone home with this wheelchair, Mr Delport from social services arrived at my house and he told me that he has came to fetch this wheelchair.
Toek die rollstool al oestoge vatted, het, me Delport van maatskapelijke diensten name toe gekomen, ei, ba, ba die rollstool weer terugneem.
Wa chi ge uzagui buisang galom, vungom vulo kloniakalom.
He promised that he will bring the wheelchair back on Monday that particular week.
Eit beloof dat hij die rollstool die vorige maan nog zou terugbreng.
Gu de kubengoku uzaguisa low wheelchair.
I am still waiting until today. He is still coming, bringing back that wheelchair. I think it's now 20.
Tot, tot van dachtu, wakat nog ver daar rollstool.
So, yinsela, apa, 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 so ben zanga yo na leyo, go ba no lato, ut district melato abo, um mrs Weaver. Daai reporta ku yele ndo, nae wa chi, vungom vulo uzagui fu man.
That's the way they are working with us, mrs Weaver, the district manager, I reported this to her. She also promised to come back to me on the Monday with this wheelchair.
Eh, dit is so alle te werk gaan met ons hier, ek het die zaak ook geraporteer aan mrs, mrs Weaver, sa is yow van die district dienste hier en said ok beloof wil die rollstool terugbesorgsa word.
So, anti kolanga ilondo, iyo londo gen disisa apa guni, ingaba yinsela, ebussejenzwa ngai, esipatwa ngaiyo tinaba kubase kilaye.
I am dissatisfied, not happy. Hence I have brought this issue now to you. Is this the only way how we disabled ones should be treated?
Ekas so ongelukkig oer die stand van zaken en dus so kom ek dit onder uw aandacht breng. Is dit oer mensen gestremde persoon moet behandel?
Bye, bye danke, I, I need you to conclude.
Eh, I get any indima ifuna o home affairs.
The other issue that I want to address you about concerns, the department of home affairs.
Ja, immer lungane idiam.
That concerns my identity judgment.
Die andere zaak wat ek vou opere te doen met binnenlandse zaken, were my identiteitsdocument.
Denza, is it clear ose idi, kui minyage ngapambi.
Years ago, I have applied for an identity judgment.
Ek het jarig leerde aanzoek gedoen voor identiteitsdocument.
Di liwele kunye notati weet.
Don't forget that I'm a twin brother to my sister.
Di thekandisende application for e driver's license, yabo yi idi se nee yitete.
When I applied for a driver's license, I received my identity document back with a different or another date of birth on it.
Toek mijn aanzoek gedoen het voor mijn bestuurderslicentie, het ek dit gekrei, maar met de verkeerde geboorte datum daarop.
Tiza okela lage yitete ndiselo ngai, get 27, siga april 1952.
Let me tell you, I was born on the 27th April 1952.
Ekas geboren 27 april 1952.
Le idi interiitendiselo ngai, 17, siga may 1952.
The new ID mentions that I was born on the 17th May 1952.
En die nieuwe idi document, praat van 17 mei 1952, as my geboorte datum.
Di tendis ya gwa home affairs, galom pasamoba yen zileyo, borna eshi home affairs.
When I approached the department of home affairs to draw it to their attention, the mistake that they have done.
Toek na binnenlandse zaken gegane, om hi die fout onder de aandacht te breng.
Wa chiwa gunke ngoku, mandi patale ngoku.
I was now told that I shall have to pay a certain amount.
Gen, gen pasamaba yen zengabo.
Is da gesee, ek moet een secere bedrag betaal.
A mistake that has been done by them, I must now pay for.
En ek men o betaal voor fout wat alle gemaak heet.
Wa be uta de we to pa gengoku loliwele kunye nam, esha amba ngala tete si zelo ngai.
My twin sister in the meantime, she was using the date, our correct date of birth.
Mij twielingszister intussen het die correcte geboorte datum gebruik.
Umbuzo wa mgenoku, kuko eshi idi siincha, zenzi wa yo fu.
My question is that we now have the new identity documents that are being prescribed now.
En mij fraa het het doen met die nieuwe identiteitsdocument, wat nou verais word.
Ingaba tiza ufunye lona, obama tibulela kula, tete yami yoksalo ngapambi.
Is it gonna be agreed that I should move back or return to use my original date of birth?
Moet ek nou weer teruggaan en mij uersprongelijke geboerte datum gebruik.
Umbuzo wa mulato.
That is exactly my question.
En goos.
I thank you.
En dit is mij vraag, bye danke.
Bye danke. Um, kan ik vier persoon kreeg? Thank you.
Thank you very much, can we have the fourth speaker?
Ik am alam gu spiso, maram zimela, suke widanes haid, eh George.
Si, spison zimela from George is my name.
Ekas spison zimeso van George.
I'm here, indo enzete angoku, in the area of social development.
I am going to address you on the issue of the social development.
Ek wil praat oer maatskapelijke ontwikkeling.
Paala petchala konna, begu konna is scolo gtaala, ngohambe kwey tresha lisa scolo esha valwa.
There where we are staying, there was a school in the olden days, as time went, the school was then closed.
Eh, ba ek won, was da früheres school, maar dit is intussen toegemaakt.
Em, ba kuba lisa scolo ses valiwe, mpakatu ale andaw shala ku yo, wisebense landau, isindu sana nama meetingi, ori imshado, ori isindo sana ne ma funera service.
After the school was closed, the community in the vicinity used the school for social gatherings, marriages and funeral.
Na dat is school gesleut is, is die gebouw gebruik, die gemeenschap die gebouw gebruik voor sociale geliantier is, is trouwes en so on.
Gen ba kwey tresha gu besekamuge i NGO, efige yasabense abashlaal.
After a while, there arrived NGO members, these NGO members, they used the residence.
Daar het naark, mensen gekom van de nierigerringsorganisatie en alle dit as een blijplek gebruik.
Ukfiga wabo ba fige nje ngabanda bazowen zama project kwole ebashalini. Ek kubeleni, babi zabashla, kubashlangan ndaony, ukuzebezo is ngaki zabashlaal.
In the beginning, they started as if they are having projects that they are going to do for the people and later on, they call people together and will have meetings and address issues concerning the residence.
Alle het eerst gesee of die indruk geskip dat alle projectes ondernem voor die mensen en led to met die mensen ek vergader en samensprekings gehad.
Aba antu, aba, aba volunteer, kalele baba involve glama project, cheng ngohambe kwey tresha akwa tiwa, aba patale, aba njeba volunteer, ukuzebezo bazofuma na, ama service glia project.
The people in the projects who volunteered, it was then derived that they must pay so that ultimately, they might also be used or be involved in these projects.
Eh, die vrijwilligers zou ek voor die projecte gebruik word, maar dit is too severe.
Intenze killege, uksebense labashlaal, bo na batatile la ma paper, bahaamba bo funa ma sponsors na ma fans, kwez ye ndau, oko da la ma fa, la ma fans, nice fu manega, i community a benefit gluto glazozin.
What happened, documents were taken and they raised funds, donations, but ultimately, when they have got these donations, there is nothing that the community had benefited from these donations.
Eh, die mensen tu fonds gesuk en wo gekrei, ma die gemeenschap het naarklaat nie bartre van bij die donausis wat alle ontfanget namens die gemeenschap.
Um zegel leo, liya profate ina oama facilities, oko da ifyo funa uneto konna, ba chmelo volunteer for something uneto sapagu zoto liservis ya.
They have all the facilities in this property, but when you want something from them, they would say you must volunteer, do volunteer duties in order to get something from them.
Alle het alle faciliteiten nie die gebouw, maar als je vrouw om dat daarvan te benut, dan wordt je angese om vrijwilligerswerk van alle te verrug.
Bye danke. You need to conclude please, thank you.
Ba chena lapaya bezawenza ite ike, ma le teke, inta bayenzile, benze izindo zokdala bantuana, oko ta bantuana ba daliglazinto, if be bon mtoana ezha mbela, ndeleni, bam shoota, bam fange wi Facebook, ndeni, bam kubere be funa ma fans, ngengo kuti, aban bakla ndau vele, ba yasafara ndeni, bo na ba chola ma, ma fans, oko ta mpakati a benefit londo le.
They said they will use a daycare center there, they would take photos of the children in the nearby area and they would get donations, but ultimately, the people did not benefit anything from this.
Alle het gesel is so die gebouw gebruik voor de dachzorgcentrum, alle het foto's geneem van die kinders in die omgeving, maar op die ohend het daar niks van gekom waar bij die gemeenschap gebaat het nie.
Bye danke.
Siawule. I'm not yet finished please.
Okay, I give you, I will give you a little bit of time, but you must conclude, thank you.
Ik thank you. Ingage la fiki velakon, if ti na nje ngabashlaal, si reza izindo, ez, ez, ez affecta bashlaal ik ti na, mas figure lapo, goma social development, na goma spala, ba tu mas spala, we already got things, but those things are not in our hands, in that NGO.
If we raised issues, the social development and the municipality would finally say they have got these details, but ultimately, we people with these concerns are benefiting nothing from them. I thank you.
Als ons bij maatskapelijke dienst, of bij die municipaliteit voorsprak doen en vrouw verhulp, dan zellen ja alle die besondereden, maar daar gebeur niks nie. Bye danke.
Bye danke. Why we have our last person for this first round? Thank you.
Eh, Molweni bapa, bashla ngapambi.
I greet you all in front of me.
Tingu nobengazi, Theodora, Trentane. Nobengazi, Theodora, Trentane.
Nobengazi, Theodora, Trentane.
Wasse George, eh Lavaikamp.
From Lavaikamp eh George.
Ekas van Lavaikamp eh George.
Yitolkas ninsa, ses zuka zusebenza pokum.
Eh, many interpreters will not work with me, could you please allow them to sit down and leave me alone?
Idi, idi talk about me for me, ik kan i alleva as upblief vrouw om te gaan sit.
Oh no, you one, interpret you, who is interpreting from thosa.
Eh, tingu mmm tu osis kulan.
I am one who is not well, I am... I am one who is not well, I am sick. This is for more than ten years that I'm sick.
I'm sick for ten years?
My two legs are also swollen and the veins are not working normally. And I have some injuries on one of my lungs. And as a result, at the back, I also have pains that I suffered from, that I feel. Thirdly, I also suffer from depression. That when it has attacked me, would cause me to lie or slip down. But yesterday, the state doctor has kicked me out. He didn't approve me getting a grant. But previously, I used to get this disability grant, but yesterday, strangely, he has dismissed me. I can no longer get it. It's difficult where I'm standing right now. I can't stand here for a very long time. I thank you. I asked the person responsible for the health department to speak to our state medical practitioners. Yes, this minute, I have it with me. I brought it along with me, expecting that the doctor, who is the minister responsible for health, he would see this document. I am not the only one. There is also another one who is not well, who is suffering from a heart attack. And the doctor is always dismissing also her application.
Thank you so much.
I was recently asked for a visa, but the state doctor asked me to ask for it again. And now I don't have a visa anymore. And there is another woman who has a similar status to me and who also doesn't have a visa.
Bye, Danki. I'm going to ask the panel to answer the questions and may I ask the public to be a bit quieter, please?
I will now ask the members of the panel to answer the questions and may I ask the public to be a bit quieter, please? Good afternoon. We've decided that we'll start with Home Affairs because we've only received one question. And that is from Tata Mgon Wanyi.
Good morning. We're going to start with social development, but we haven't asked for a question yet. And this is from Tata Mgon Wanyi.
As I understand the question, Tata applied for his ID document, he says, years ago. And the birth date, the year of his birth was captured incorrectly.
As I understand it, he has been looking for a birth certificate or an identity certificate, but his birth date was wrongly printed on it.
When he went to the department's offices to effect an amendment to his ID, he was told that he would need to pay a fee for that correction.
He went to the department's office to ask for the wrong address. As I said, I have to pay for the things.
He also requests advice as to which ID number should he use. His correct birth date or the one that currently stands on his ID book.
The woman asked for what her birth date is. The date he has to use, the correct one or the one that was wrongly printed on his ID document.
So my response is as follows. Tata, when you applied for your ID, I'm not sure how long ago that was. But currently, our practice in our offices are as follows. When you apply for your ID, we give you a copy of your application so that you can take it home with you.
Tata, I don't know how long ago it was that you looked for it or your ID document. But first, we ask you, when you look for it, you get a copy of the document. For us to use it.
You then have seven days within which to come back to us in case there was a mistake on the application form. Or, once you receive your ID book, you have seven days within which to return to Home Affairs with any amendment together with your application so that you can prove that it wasn't your fault but the department's fault.
First, we ask you to get a copy of your document and when you read it, you read it. It's your turn, but if you read the document, you read the document and your ID document to the department. Then we can decide if you made the mistake in your document and your document or the department made the mistake.
If, of course, the fault was that of the department's, we will effect the amendments free of charge.
If the fault of the department was, then we will ask for it free of charge.
But otherwise, there will be a charge for that amendment because it does cost us money. We have to reproduce another instrument, another ID book.
But if the fault was, then you have to look for it and then you will pay the price.
I shall be here after the session and I'll be happy to look at the ID book if you have it with you to see what the date of issue was and see if we can assist. But let me just give you this bit of advice. That when you are asked for your ID number, please use the ID number as it stands on your ID book. Otherwise, you will cause enormous complications for yourself. Until such time as your ID has been amended and corrected, please use the ID number that stands in your ID book.
I'll go back to the meeting and I'd like to go to the document or the ID document and I can look there. And then we can decide.
The advice is to please use the ID number in the ID book as it stands.
And the advice, what I can give you is to use the ID number so it is in the ID document.
Thank you, Deputy Minister. Thanks. The other part of Mr. Mak Yonjana's question was the issue of his wheelchair. Now, let me just make a very general point before I come to the specific point of his wheelchair. I am sick and tired of our people, and specifically our most poor and vulnerable people, being treated in a way that is completely undignified. I'm going to find out more information about the specific case. And if someone must be held accountable, we are going to hold people accountable. I'm sick of officials treating people like this. I think I must make the point that all our people must be treated with dignity. That's the essence of what our constitution is talking about. And so, Mr. Mak Yonjana, I'm going to investigate this matter. I see officials of mine sitting there. I'm going to ask them to immediately go to you and get more information from you so that we can take this matter up and see that your wheelchair is returned immediately.
The second thing, what we called was the question of the wheelchair. And I'm going to look into it. I'm afraid, I'm afraid that people are not trustworthy and not trustworthy treated and we have to decide.
Mr. Masie Mesor, the young man from George, I would also like to just interact with you immediately after this meeting because I need to know more information about what's the name of the NGO, where is the school. You know, you gave us a lot of very general information so that we can do a proper investigation and see that if we as social development fund that organization, that we need some answers from them as to what the impact of their programs are and what exactly their programs are. So allow me to meet with you immediately in front after the meeting so that we can just talk and get more information about the issue.
Here we talked about the non-organization, which has a building project. Can you, as a member, come back now and tell us about it?
Mrs. Teodora Cantana, I think she's immediately been taken to the doctor now again so that they can just have a proper look at her for a second, another view. But I also want to say to people that we cannot question the professionalism of our doctors. If they find that you're not disabled, that's their professional view. And I think there is a mechanism where one gets another opinion, but that opinion is then final. So I just want to make the point about the professionalism of our doctors. That I think if they find that this doesn't qualify for a disability, that is then a point, but you can have it on review by another doctor. And I think doctors' plans, if I'm wrong, perhaps you can just indicate.
Madam Teodora, I can, with the uncertainty of the wheelchair, I can, as a member, come back now. Then we can decide.
Responses of the woman that asked for outsourcing. Yes, the fact is that we don't outsource as much as we can. But what we think is uncertain about this is whether it's medicine services that are outsourced or is it the usual operational services? It's uncertain what it is that is outsourced. We have to contact Dr. Terence Masel who is in the group. And it gives us a bit more information about this. And while I'm on the line, I want to ask Dr. Masel to give us information about training and rural allowance.
We are going to take the second lot of five people to address the panelists.
I request all those people who have returned requests to go at the back there. There is parliamentary staff who will be able to receive such proposals. And then they will take those proposals and hand it over to the department in parliament.
People who have a complaint can ask for it in the parliament and it will be approved by the parliament.
Good afternoon. My name is Thosa Matlazo.
Good morning. I'm from.
I am here representing the ECD sector.
I'm from the old social development sector.
On the side of the Department of Social Development.
I'm from the Department of Social Development.
There is a delay when it comes to the.
There is a delay when it comes to the period of signing TPAs, especially when the new financial year is about to kickstart. And that has got a great impact in the ECT centers. We don't have any funder on our side.
Onz het altijd de probleem is het na bij de einde van die boekjaar is voor TPAs om onerteken te worden en ons het de probleem want ons het niet enige andere mensen wat ons borg of geld geeft of bevondt niet.
Which brings a question as to don't they have any mechanism whereby they can sign the book before the financial year?
Is daar nemen neer om hier die boek te onerteken voor de einde van die boekjaar niet?
Secondly, we would like to have an allocation of a subsidy.
De tweede ring wat ik wil nummer is dat ons het toewijst om wel heer voor een subsidy.
The requirement is that umsali, a combined income must be three thousand and less.
The requirement is that a combined income from a parent should be three thousand renns and lesser. So that we can get a subsidy via the child. Our request is that can't they increase it to five thousand renns?
Daar is de vereiste voor die tegenover wat aanzoek doen dat er een sekere gecombineerde inkomsten moet zijn bij een familie, man en vrouw en ik wil net graag wet of dit niet verwacht kan worden naar vijf duizend rand niet.
Because many parents have got many children, whereas they are only earning that three thousand renns, which is not enough.
Daar is oors wat bij je kinders zet en die perk wat gesteld is op drie duizend rand is niet altijd genoeg om naar alle kinders om te zien niet.
As the centers, we are greatly affected by the Department of Labor and the Department of Social Development's requirements.
Ons wordt gestremd hier die vereist is van die department van arbeid en ook maatskapelijke ontwikkeling.
Department of Labor has got a specific amount that people are not supposed to be paid.
Die department van arbeid het is specifieke bedrag voor die mensen niet in inkomsten mag worden gekrijgen als ze de hoop voel krijgen niet.
When it comes, when it comes to social development, it's only children who are being funded according to a particular percentage.
Om als het komt bij maatskapelijke ontwikkeling is de dan niet kinders wat bevondt wordt of het uulach krijgen.
Therefore, it brings to the point that I've raised earlier that at least they must cater for children.
En daarom het ik die voor te wegericht dat hier die bedrag geluk moet worden naar vijf duizend rand.
As ECTs, we have a special request from the municipality of Old Soren. Indeed, we do receive an allocation from the budget. When we make a follow-up on that budget, they say no, they have transferred the budget in order to cater for another project.
Die municipaliteit geeft Frouwe Kinderontwikkeling uh begrouting of bevondsel lever, maar als ons meer geld wil hebben en als ons dit opvolg is daar altijd probleem.
We request assistance from the municipality.
Ons vraagt dat die municipaliteit ons moet onertenen, paar dankje.
My name is Lydia Sindile from Nice.
Die represente is senior citizen, pae keile to Nice.
I represent citya citizens in the Keile Township in Nice.
Ik word in woordag senior burgers en township in Nice.
I embarked on this project in two thousand and nine. What motivated me to start this project was to witness the elderly people suffering in a despicable manner.
Wat mij gemotiveerd om hier mee te beginnen is omdat ik gesinnet hoorlei die ouder mensen, die ouder geharde.
One of the elderly people was sexually abused and another one was kept inside the house because his or her children couldn't find an alternative place to keep her whilst they are away to school.
De en senior burger was seksueel angerand en ander was in de huis toe geslagen omdat helen niet mensen kon krijgen om naar die persoon om te zien niet.
I therefore went to the Department of Social Services to report this matter and then the Department of Social Services referred me to the municipality.
Ik had naar maatskapelijke diensten gegaan om helle hoop in te win, maar hale het mij toegesteren naar die municipaliteit.
The municipality referred me back to the Department of Social Services and the Department of Social Services advised me to continue with this project. They only visited me three times and then after that they never bothered to come back.
Die municipaliteit heeft mij terugverwijst naar maatskapelijke diensten en hale het mij gevraagd om voor te gaan met die project, maar van dat helen met mij gepraat het helen mij niet drie keer besook om te zien hoe dat gaan.
What we request is that the department must give us an accommodation for the elderly people because they did find an alternative place which is far away and that place is in a colored area.
Om ons al bij je graag he dat helen onze blijp blik moet geven voor hier die ouder mensen zodat ons nalle kan omzien. Helaat heeft ons verwijst naar een blik of een blik voor ons gegeven, maar dit is bij je verweg van waar die mensen won en dit is een klirland gebied.
Even in that, in that place in Valmont, if you want elderly people to be accommodated, it means that they, they must first look at the list. So if there is a person who is deceased in the list, then that person can, can be substituted and be able, to be able to accommodate this person.
Die Valmont, die blik voor helen ons nou verwijst het voor die senior burgers, is daar ook een probleem om die mensen daar te krijgen van, van dat is niet een blik voor helen niet en helen moet eerst wachten voor iemand om af te sterv voor dat iemand dan blik daar kan krijgen.
As I'm speaking to you, we are currently embarking on this project using the public hall. You found out that many times our material gets stolen and it gives us many other problems.
Ons gebruikte gemeenschapszaal op die oomlik, maar dit is niet heeltemelv veilig niet van bij je keer wordt ons goed wat ons daar berg ge steal.
As I conclude, I want to highlight that another problem is that is to get the NPO number. We have tried to phone the administrative site in Pretoria, but up to so far no response has come forth.
De andere probleem wat ons het is om een NPO nummer te krijgen, maar blijkbaar moet ons met die department kalken waar die cantura in Pretoria is en dit is geweldig gestruid om die nummer te krijgen.
Another problem is to find an alternative plot so that we can be able to accommodate these elderly people, but the municipality of Nice is saying they don't have a space.
Om ons zoek voor ander blik, maar ongelukkig is die municipaliteit van Nice dat helen niet ander erf het wat ons kan gebruiken niet.
I therefore plead with the minister to look at the issue of elderly people because you must understand that nature dictates that as elderly people grow older, they become like kids and they are exposed in vulnerability of society.
Ik ruchas blij voor ploei en een minister om in te trainen om ons te helpen, want zo is allemaal dit goed wet hoe ouder die mensen raak, hoe meer kwetsbaar is hul en hoe meer is hul zoals kinders en daarom heeft hul meer zorg nodig, dank je.
Good afternoon, I greet the panel. I'll emcee everybody here, I greet everybody. My name is Nathan Scarlet. I'm originally from Cape Town, Mitchells Plain, but I'm currently residing in Parkeldorp, George. The reason why I am here in George, I work with drug addicts, I work with gangsters and I work with prostitutes trying to rehabilitate them and getting them down into Cape Town. I was called by a lady. My name is Nathan Scarlet and I just want to greet the panel. I'm originally from Mitchells Plain in Cape Town, but at the moment I'm residing in Parkeldorp and I'm down here because I work with people who who are addicted to drugs. And I say that to say this, that not long ago there was a murder in, in Parkeldorp, in Marigold, Petuna Marigold, also involving drugs.
Ik praat hier, want daar was onlangs iemand vermoord in Marigold, in Parkeldorp.
Yes, and the reason why I am here is obviously working with the addicts. So the problem is there is no facilities available in George or in Parkeldorp and when, when I went to go do my own research to, to see whether it is rehab.
Ik werk met verslaafders omdat ik het nodig heb, ach het ja is omdat daar niet enige plek is waar die verslaafders geholpen wordt in George of in Parkeldorp niet.
And when I did some research, I, I found a place in Parkeldorp, but the cheapest one was five thousand renns a month. And you know, because of, a lot of times because of the situation of families, they don't have such a lot of money.
Om ik het voor een blik gezocht om mijn werk te doen, ik heb een afvoorzing gedaan en uitgevind dat het redelijk dier is. Dit beloopt iets zoals vijf duizend rand per maand en niet weer dat die ouder van die verslaafders en die verslaafders geld heeft zelf, heeft niet altijd bij je geld om dan een bijdraad te leveren niet.
So my point is I'm also ex-drug addict. I've been clean now for nine years, almost ten years. So my question to, to you guys are if there are finances available for rehabilitation, what can we do as a community to, you know, to, to get those finances? And if, and my second question is.
Ik was zelf dwellem verslaafde geweest en ik wil graag gepleid oye rug voor onertening der bevondsel zodat ik zelf hier die mensen kan helpen om gerehabiliteerd te worden.
Like I said, I'm from Cape Town, so coming here, I left behind my four children because I, I believe that this is the purpose or this is the calling that God has placed upon my life. So I also, secondly, I would want to know if there are, because I, I see in town, in, in, in George, in Parkeldorp, yes, in George, in the, in the city, I see there are quite a lot of buildings that is standing empty. So, so, so even if there's no finance available, what can we do to get a building and to get a building available?
Zoals ik vroeger gezegd is ik van de kaap en ik had zelf mijn vier kinders in de kaap geloos want ik had het gevoel dat dit de roeping is om dwellem verslaafders te komen helpen in hier die gebied. Ik had in Parkeldorp en George gezien dat dat bij je leergebouw is en ik wil net graag wet hoe dit moontelijk zal zijn om van hier die gebouwen te gebruiken voor die werk wat ik doe, bij je dank je.
Goedemiddag dames en heren, ik groeie die paneel. My name is Nico de Vos. Ik vertienwoordig Valmont, oude tijd is in Nice.
My name is Nico de Vos and I represent Valmont Old Age Home in Nice.
Mijn verzoek is voor midden aan Department Gesondheid. Op die oomlik is ons een financiële difficult en ons wil graag hoor bij Department Gesondheid of helen niet onze verpleegafdeling aan die hand wil vat om te staan om helle salaris of hulze te betalen niet. Op die oomlik zit ons met vijftien hot assistants en ons het vijftig inwoners.
I want to request the Department of Health to see if they can help us. At the moment, we in financial straits. We have a problem, we don't have enough money. And what I would like to know is the section, we have fifteen nursing assistants and we want to know whether the Department of Health won't fund them by paying their salaries because we have fifty people that we are looking after in this institution at the moment.
Volgens mijn belegging kan ik nou als ik recht is mag ons, mag een personeelstaaf verantwoordelijk zijn voor vijf residents. Op die oomlik werkkunsttenis moet van een professionele hot assistants. In the event, we need one professional hospital assistant compared to fourteen residents. And this is very, very hard for them. At night, we struggle very much. Volunteers do not want to do any work anymore. And this is in the event our big financial expenditure. So we would like to ask for assistance from here.
I would like to request this because what I understand about the situation is that we need one ward assistant for five of the residents, the older people living there. And at the moment, the ratio is one to fourteen, which is of course a big problem, especially when it comes to caregiving. The other problem that we have too, in addition to this, is that nobody wants to work night duty. And before, we used to have volunteers, but volunteers don't want to come and work for free anymore.
So we would like to ask for medical help. Thank you.
And what we very much would like this afternoon and what we are asking for is your assistance. Thank you very much.
I'm left with one person so that we can take all these concerns to the panelists. Thank you.
I can't speak to our people. I can't talk to others. I can't help them. I can't help everything.
Thank you. My name is Geraldine Wildeman. I am from Harlem. And I would like to ask the next two questions of the Minister of Health. And the Minister of Social Development. I would like to ask you.
I'm Geraldine Wildeman from Harlem and I want to ask two questions. One of the Minister of Health and the other one from the Minister of Social Development.
For the Minister of Health, I would not ask. At our clinic in Harlem, twice in our clinic, it was built, and now the clinic door is closed. But it is contracted by the state. They use our local unemployed people. Is the department's responsibility to do that?
I just want to ask of the Minister of Health. Our clinic in the area had to be fixed up. In other words, it had to be painted and the roof had to be replaced. But they brought contractors from Cape Town to do the work. I just want to know whether this is the policy, that you don't use local people to do this work, but that you rather bring people from a place that is far away?
And the next one is the patient bus. What our patients from Harlem need to transport to George Hospital. I would like the minister to come and see how wide our area is for our patients. People have to walk ten kilometers to the local clinic that is in Harlem. They come from the outer place and it is winter. Then they are brought back there. They have to walk back. If the bus is now closing, and Harlem arrives, they don't go there. We want that to be investigated and examined and that is indeed done.
I just want to speak about patient transport in our area. We have one bus that services all the patients in this area. And I just want to say that this area is fairly large. Some people have to walk ten kilometers to get to the clinic, to make use of this transport. And then they get brought home at about six o'clock at night. They are dropped at the clinic and then they have to walk back to where they live.
And the next one is, I would like to know if the Department of Health's responsibility is to determine how many times residents in a town get sick every year. When your sister visits the local clinic. When your sister visits the local clinic, I was yesterday there. I said, they are giving instructions. I said it so in the logo with the blue sticker of the department that people have three times per year to visit the clinic. Now I would like to ask, determine the department, how many times people get sick every year?
I just want to know whether it is the policy of the department to determine how many times a person may get sick per year. Because at our local clinic, the nursing sister there showed us a document, waved the document with the blue stamp of the department on there, stating that in future, people will only be able to visit the clinic three times per year to receive treatment.
And the question is a woman said, she is from Brandwa. She said, it is a mobile clinic that they visit once a week. But they have a problem with the doctor who visits there. That they don't investigate the people. It is the same case in Harlem. Where the doctor looks at you and tells you, he is healthy. Rather than investigating your physical. We want the minister to investigate that too.
A lady from Brandwa asked me to put this question to you. Apparently, they have a mobile clinic that visits their area. And the doctor that accompanies this mobile clinic apparently does not examine them fully or properly. We also have the same problem in Harlem where the doctor doesn't physically examine you, but then he can tell you what is wrong or not wrong with you.
And the last one is for health. The social one is not. Our problem is with the telephone clinic. They say if you are ready, it is in the clinic from the north. The speaking room has to be longer because it is impossible. People have to sit there because someone else has made an appointment and you are sitting there all day waiting for it. We have to do it with the speaking rooms in the clinic.
My last question to the Department of Health is about the appointment system and how many people may access the clinic during the day. The problem we have is that people sit there for long hours and other people have appointments and they are then served before you. We would like, or we would rather ask or request that this system be stopped.
Thank you, Minister. I hope you will investigate it. And the next one is for you, Minister of Social Development. I have said earlier that for the minister, I would like to ask. What does each department, or is each department's responsibility to do that? That people who are busy, Sasa cards are in their possession. And then they have a contract with each department to pay people directly from their Sasa card in their personal accounts. Because this is what the woman said to me. We have to make sure that the police, the police have to make sure of my safety because I am after her sister's work and he himself is paying the police.
Then I have a question to the Minister of Social Development and I just want to know whether this is policy or not. A certain white lady has people's Sasa cards in her possession. And apparently, she says that she has a contract with the department which allows her to do this and also then to directly take money from their, from their Sasa cards and then deposit that money into her own account. I want to know whether this is so and whether this is policy or not. I went to a police station to report this case and I spoke to a police officer there. But later I discovered that this police officer was actually this lady's brother.
And Minister, then the last, you are talking about the outbursts. Then we are disabled people, we are in a rural area that is full of people and empty. Then they are expected to walk around the hall for a while. They have two entrances. And I was yesterday, I said to the staff who do work here, you have to take care of the AK-47. You can block us. We can do nothing. We can't go to your door. And we want you to be very careful and investigate this and also the town.
Minister, I just want to mention this last point and I want you to come and investigate whether this is true or not. I live in an area that is very rural with lots of hills. And when the old people have to come for their payouts, they not only have to walk down all these hills and difficult areas to get to where the payout is going to take place, but they have to stand in queues around the hall and wait for their money and wait until they serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much Geraldine for all what you have asked to the panel. But as a co-program director, where maybe it has dismissed to both of us that we don't have the MEC of health of the Western Cape within the panel. And secondly, Geraldine, there are no policies with this current government that says a person must be sick twice or once a year. There is no such. Most of the issues that you have been explaining here are very much abusive according to the Freedom Charter that social and health is free. And between Sasa and the pay, there is no middle person. But the MEC is going to clarify that. Thank you very much. Over to you, the panelists.
The LER for health of the West Cape is not here. But the other LER will talk about problems. I would like to say that it is not a responsibility that there should be a social help for health. It is like if the people are entitled to be rewarded.
Thank you, Jay. I want to just address Sister Toza, the first one. And the first question was around ECDs. And I just want to give a little bit of quick background and then also say what we have done to exactly address the issue that you have raised.
Madam Toza, you have talked about children's development and I would very much like to know what you have decided to work on.
The first thing I just want to say that we have one thousand one hundred early childhood development centers in the province.
I would first of all say that we have one thousand one hundred children's development centers in our province.
That is one of our biggest sub-directorates, but in the event.
It is one of our biggest sub-directorates that we have at the moment.
And one of the fallouts of the one thousand one hundred ECDs is that payments, TPA signing of the, that's the contracts and payments are sometimes delayed.
An infinite problem that we have with the TPAs, the outbursts, the money is that it is a penalty for fraud and that we have other problems.
It is for this reason that we have done a review of the ECD sub-directorate and we have upgraded that sub-directorate now, now, now to a full directorate. And we are in the process of advertising a number of posts so that we can address the issues that Sister Toza raised.
The problem that Sister Toza talked about, we have seen her in the sub-directorate and we have upgraded to a full directorate, just to look at all the problems that were mentioned before.
We, also the issue of the means test that Sister Toza was talking about. The means test.
And also the problem of the necessity, the combined salary of three thousand, three thousand one hundred. It has also been discussed.
We have also discussed it. That is one of our good, what we are busy with, also to look at the benchmark is still, it has to be higher. Your two thousand rand is very less than what it was a few years ago.
I'm sorry, the matter hasn't been settled yet. We are still looking at that and we fully agree with you that the amount given is much too low.
So we hope to raise this issue at our next meeting where we have all the MSCs and the National Minister and Deputy National Minister to see whether we can have a review and just a look at. And I think that's the purpose of today, that people come up with suggestions and we look at what people are saying and that we go and address those issues that are raised.
Here the question will be answered by the next meeting. As the LER, the young ministers and the ministers, and we will discuss it. I think this is just why we come to the people, to hear what the problem is, what the difficulties are and then go back and discuss it and see what the only solution is.
The issue of outwearing municipality, I can't speak on behalf of the municipality where money meant for ECD projects were given, not to that, but diverted. But I think I'm sure someone from the municipality may address that.
Unfortunately, I have no answer for what is being discussed in the outwearing municipality. But I am sure that someone from the municipality will give an answer later.
The second issue of Ms Lydia Sinthisa, around the older persons issues.
The second question of Ms Lydia Sinthisa was about our people, our citizens.
This is again, I just want to give a bit of a. This is again, I just want to give a bit of a statistic before I answer the question. We have something like 300 service centres for older persons. Now service centres are places where people, older persons, can come every day for the day to that centre to do exercise, jump up and down a phone book, coke bottle filled with sand, so you don't need expensive stuff. And also meet other older persons, but you stay with your family.
A little bit of statistic. We have 300 health centres for elderly to let the elderly people come. And that can be used for social care with other elderly people and they can do exercises.
One important point of the children's centres is that people have a day off. In many cases, it is the only day off that people have. And we know that giving to older people is very, very much. Even a politician can live without giving to them.
One of the most important purposes of the service centres for the older people is the fact that they get one meal there per day. And sometimes that is their only meal. The problem, I understand that they have a problem because the monies that they get is definitely not enough to survive on for the month. A principal point we want to make and I want to really say to Lydia Sinthisa. Thank you for the good work we're doing because we will not tolerate in this province any older person who is sexually abused, mentally abused, financially abused. When you get your pension, they take your money off or any form of abuse. We will not tolerate it in this province.
I want to say sincerely, Lydia, thank you for what she does for the elderly people. Because we cannot deny that elderly people are treated unfairly. Or that sexually, economically, or in any other way treated unfairly. There must be a decision that is taken.
So I want to practically suggest to Lydia to go down the road, in the main road in Nice, there's an office. To go and ask guidelines as to how to get fully registered. Firstly, as a service centre. To assist her also in trying to find some space. It's very difficult, I must say. And it's nice to have all these nice ideas, but it's difficult to get decent venues in many, many of our areas. And thirdly, to see how far an NPO registration is.
I want to say very much to Lydia that is a door in Nice that she can visit to get the necessary information and help to register as a children's centre. The other points?
There she will also receive help looking for a specific venue.
Or a place where the people can seek help. But I must say that it is also very difficult to find such a place. But she will also help here to get the NPO number that she wants.
The question from Nathan Scullard around the issue of a type of rehabilitation centre in the George area. I just want to indicate that there is one in Nice. Where we at this point are referring people to Nice. But I also will be able to give him if he meets me afterwards, just the guidelines, how to. Because he asked how do ordinary citizens access funding from the government to start such projects. So perhaps just to meet afterwards and just to get that information from me, Mr Scullard. And then Mr Niko de Vos. The old age home, but I think that's a question that we can start talking to health. Because that's a question that always comes up. The issue of nurses being subsidised by health. Because the Department of Social Development pays very little for that. But I think that's some of the kind of issues that the two departments can start talking and open some kind of MOU to see how far we can get with that type of subsidy for nurses within old age homes.
Mr Nathan Scully, is a rehabilitation centre in Nice, it is said that is near George. But is it in Nice and it asks how a person and his personal ability, the ability to be found can get from the department. If I come to see after the gathering, then I will give you the details and the necessary information. And then Mr Niko... Mr Niko de Vos. I want to say a question for help with the disability assistants to get a monetary income, to pay them. I want to say that the Department of Community Development, very much, pays for it. But maybe the Department of Health and Community Development can work together and see how they can come up with a solution for your problem.
The last point that I want to make as a statistic. In 2008, and I see my lead from the parliament before me, from the provincial western cape ladies lady with the green top. And I always remind them that there were only eight rehabilitation centres in the western cape. There are now 25. I just opened one last week. But we need to come to the rural areas more aggressively. Because the drug lords are running from the cape now to the small towns to infect them also with this kind of scads of drugs.
I want to say a little bit of statistic. There were 98 rehabilitation centres in the whole state. There are now 25. And this is a question that we have to look at. Because it seems as if the dwelling base is now moving more towards smaller places. And the scale of dwelling business is growing.
I just want to address the last point of Mrs Geraldine Wilderman. I just want to say Dr Terblans is here and I think he would be able to explain to you also from SASSA. That no third party deductions are allowed. And I want to repeat, no third party deductions are allowed. And where anyone, whether it is a red, pink, white, blue or whatever colour the person is. Whatever colour they are. Can no one more than one person, and for all other people's person, put it on. No one can put another person's card on your head. Leave immediately. As the police station leaves the employees from SASSA. Then I will ask Dr Terblans to answer that. And then I will ask Dr Masel to to ask the technician for the transport of three visits per year. It is like a legend, many people can see it. We will ask Dr Masel to answer that. And then, but I will start with the health panelist on our panel. Thank you.
I want to say to you, Mr Wilderman. She might maybe talk to Dr Terblans here. And he will say that no third party can make any withdrawal from SASSA. And it doesn't matter what color you are, whether you are white, pink, blue, whatever. No one is allowed to use your card to make third party withdrawals.
There is also a doctor in the audience that might help you with the transport story too.
Yes, once again, let me just go back to two quick questions that was asked earlier. I think there was some confusion in terms of that. I want to say a little bit of truth. There is a process that we are busy in the Department of Health of the State. That we have a college festival in George with a hostel. That can ensure that the students that have to come to the places in time. That the students can stay in the hostel. So it is guaranteed, that process is definitely in progress. Then the other thing that was also there was the question of allowances. Now, that allowances is a specific goal for scarce skills. To attract scarce skills to the rural areas. Now, we are going to go to that, to go to that path. To get scarce skills to the rural areas and that allowances for that. But if you feel qualified for that, then you are entitled to Dr Masel to add.
There are two points that I just want to address from earlier. And the one thing is about the college that will be started out in George. The students will be accommodated there too and they will definitely be seen to, that is in the pipeline. There is the other matter about the allowances that goes about developing scarce skills. And the monies that were spoken about, this is the allowance. The allowance is there specifically to develop these scarce skills.
Then I will say a little bit of advice to Mr Nathan Scully. We have said that health services, the acute part of it, that means the drawing period in rehabilitation. The resources, the minister has said, can be handled between the social services and between health.
I just want to address the one matter that the health services are only about the acute illnesses that are addressed. If it's any long term thing, then it is normally between the Department of Social Development and Health. And then they work out a plan on how they are going to see to it.
Then I will also speak to the situation around Mr De Vos. Mr De Vos, the same apply around Vermont. At this moment, we already have doctors' doctors' service for the medical services that are needed. And we already have medical consumables by the old age home. But the rest, as Mr Fritz said, that there can always be something improved to make it easier. Don't forget to give your name to the services that are still called. To make sure that there is a problem also seen.
Then I just want to address the situation of Mr De Vos. The situation is basically the same as I explained earlier. There are only certain services that are delivered. There are doctor services that are delivered to the old age home. And also medical consumables. And this is seen to already. Whatever else is, as I mentioned earlier too, will have to relate to a partnership or working together between the two departments to see how your situation can be addressed.
Then I will say with my wife Wilderman, to say that public work is responsible for the building and the undergrowth and the construction and medical buildings. And our primary health is not directly related in terms of who is asked and who is not asked. But what we can say for you is we can for you pertinent, this policy in this land. That if a contractor is asked in an area, he should make use of or he or she, whoever the organisation or corporation is, should make use of local work that is on our building or our personal work.
I just want to tell Mrs Wilderman that it's not the Department of Health to seize to seize to the maintenance and that of medical buildings. It is actually the Department of Public Works that sees to whatever must be done to these buildings. But I do subscribe to the following, that if any work is done in a local area, then use must be made of local labour to do those jobs.
Then around the transportation part where people are told to move along and they have to go back after they are stopped.
Then about the question that you mentioned about transport where people have to walk long distances after they have been dropped at the clinic to get back home.
The department is busy in this area to identify places where patients are needed in their vulnerable areas, that they do not have to transport or move. But I want it pertinent, to say that no one, but no one in our area is walking along a dark path. No one. If something happens, tell us immediately and we will go there.
I just want to say that in the Eden district, we are looking at methods of people receiving treatment which are much closer to where they live. And I want to say, I want to state this pertinently, that no one but no one gets dropped in the dark and then they have to walk home after they've received their treatment and are transported back home.
The case of three people, where people can only come three times. This was wrongly interpreted.
The question or rather, the information that you got that people can only be helped or served three times at the clinic per year is incorrect.
There is a process in this area to make sure that we can provide better service than people every day. At a clinic, we sit four, five times a week. But no one, but no one is removed from the clinic.
We are working on a procedure to see, to become more effective and dealing with the people faster. But no one but no one will be turned away to receive any assistance at these clinics if necessary.
In the case where the doctor says the person is healthy, they can go. We will definitely look at this. Because this is also uncomfortable for us. If people are sick, then they have to be careful and doctors have to make sure that there is really an investigation done to people who are sick. dat daar degelijk onderzoekige doen word na mensen wat sic is.
Also the case or the situation where the doctor said the person is healthy, that is unacceptable. Proper examination should be done, full examinations to make sure what the person's state of health or illness is and it should then be addressed.
Si aikaba ke si klega, leba uklega, ampatapatenje umdu ati upilile. Abandufneke ba kloongwe, ngokupelele.
Dan die gefalwa regefra oer appointments, waar i geset ons moet wegdoen menei appointments, dit is net een intervention om verseker te maak dat ons beter dienst kan lever. Maar dit is nie real om te verseker dat ons mensen benadeel word nie. Zo as daar enigszins iemand bij een kliniek op dag wat ernstig sic is of bij hospital, moet dae persoon gezien word. En daar moet omgesien word dat daar degelijke dienst gelever word rondom daari persone. Uns is nie in die bezigheid om ons mensen te benadeel nie. De West Cape moet verseker dat mensen gesond blay en dit zal ons definitiv doen. Daarom, uns gaan nie mensen wegweis van ons medische faciliteiten af nie. Zo as ha enige iemand is wit vool, jy is benadeel deer dit, i moet as e brief met ons okontag maak daan.
The question about appointments. The appointments is a method to make sure that people get the necessary help on time and they don't have to sit at the clinics for very long hours. It is not so that people can be disadvantaged. If someone is very ill, that person will receive preferential care. That person will be helped before the others who are there already. And I just want to reiterate again, nobody will be turned away and everybody will or should receive the proper treatment they seek.
Eh ombake, ombake we appointments. Disfunugutcho indoba omba we appointments, ubalekile kotoa ke abona bandu sispbeke pambilanga, abona bandu ke abakumeeko emandundo. Disfunuktensekisa ke indoba wonke umtunelunge lo kuba afumaane, unono pele wes mbilo olfanelekle.
Bahiranki.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Thank you very much. Now, we are going to listen to other five questions. But people if they've got no questions are not forced to ask. It's over to you people.
Ons makos no geriet voor die volk en fai fraa, maas yelichin fraa et nie, dan is dit ook rechtswordan, ofunsie feeder tekani.
Engos kakulu so dis ne gelto ba ke abandu ke abasano, babuz me booz.
Eh, Nkossana Lande, eh, di sugae Mossel Bay.
My name is Nkossana Lande from Mossel Bay.
My name is Mosselaki from Mossel Bay.
Eh, di tetra on behalf of ex-political prisoners, victims of apartheid.
I am here to speak on behalf of ex-correctional prisoners during the time of apartheid.
Political.
Ik vraag namens die formaluche anhouden als tein apartheid?
I beg your pardon. It's ex-political prisoners.
Formaluche politiker erfangen is.
So i i i nden die choi guti, when we are going to ilendo yeti RC, i process yeti RC, sasi changes i u guti, sisa ofunisela banduana, eh, sisa ofumaana i medical, sisa ofumaana nogo isinlu and all that, so forth and so forth.
When we appeared before the TRC, we promised that our children are going to be educated, we are going to be allocated houses, we are going to be given other social services.
Tu ons voor die Wahrheits- en Versunningskomisie verskijnen, tu is daar ons belofte dat ons kaners verzorg sal word, dat hale opvoeding sal krei en so forth.
So, na gen dienda hamba omye omba tru yeti RC, nden dae grant wa i grant to educate abanduana bam ai freedom born.
After that process, I was granted, I received a particular grant in order to educate my children.
Eh, ke tu daana etula gekrei om my kaners te kan opvoed.
So, kuja yongelo process, kom daan ndaken daufunisela yeti RC.
But throughout the process, the TRC did not cater for me in order to educate my children.
Maar tein stadie proceset, die VVK no nie voorziening gemaak voor mij zodat ik my kanerse opvoedings kon betalen.
Eh, 2005 we invited in parliament to receive the award of honour by Utatu Mandela.
Ngonyaka 2005, saike sa menya eh parliament, okuzase sizo kfu manoka, sizo kuthwe swa imba sa, zentroni po ngongase koyo uba Uta Mandela.
En 2005 is ons de Nelson Mandela na department genoi om daar te verskijnen.
Na laa posa changes swa i medical because of i injuries, sasis ofumaane i true i torcharing.
Eh, during that occasion, they promised us to assist us in terms of medical care because while we, whilst we're political prisoners, we sustained some injuries.
Daar is tu des tes on ons belofte dat ons, dat ons beigestaan sal word met zorg fer die besierungs wat ons opgedunet, tu ons no gemakel is daas politiker anhouden is.
So, kindlangan isos, sasis bam, ba kafman so guti sina twenty-seven percent i ilendo, kwa Makana Investment, isches, kwa Makana Investment.
During the meetings that we conducted, we realized that we have a stake of twenty-seven percent at Makana Investment.
En tein stadie gesprake de dialogue word dat ons aniel van seven-twenty percent by Makana Belachingset.
So, bukok dis kasson angemisaba, but none of those individuals, akonanyen se ga iguas in the sasis changes i.
Eh, there were various issues that were discussed, such as the allocation of land and the other benefits. But up until today, nothing has been coming towards our direction.
Daas verschillende voordelen bespreek, soos die toweising van grond bijvoorbeeld, maar tot disfer het daar nog niks van gekom nie.
So, kuitala le, social development, indo ojensegayo, ndayen dae grant wa i special grant kuji TRC, zodat in die funsa banduana. But yes, guanbekile, last, 2013, ya valo lumali, es er result, umdanam kanga kubekake ngofunda. Bia ibekala, this year i first year ke eh kole.
After the TRC process, they gave me a special grant in order to educate my children. But in 2013, they closed the doors for that grant. As a result, up until now, I was not able to continue to educate my children.
Na die Wahrheits- en Versunningskomisie, etak velletula gekrei voor die opvoeding van my kaners, maar verlieder jare toletu daari grant togedraai en nou kan ik nie meer my kaners so opleiding financieren nie of befoons nie.
So, naayen dae tayla indoba man disene information eso ti ilidi shelle indoba man i fu mane i grant, di zamelukuyen zalondu lendo chepa i, kafman so psychology etu, nes physiotherapie etu, i consultant ya i five hundred runs, so andakwa azuti banana yongolo so.
I was therefore requested to come up with an information that will assist me in order to get this special grant. I therefore undertook a visit to Port Elizabeth to see a psychologist. But to my surprise, the psychologist, the consultation fee was five hundred runs, which is very expensive for me.
Eh, ke stuge fraa om documentatie te brengen om met help om daari toegang te krei to daari tula. Ke tu na Port Elizabeth gerei en ganiya se had gesehen wat my silkando onderzoeket en die konsultatie foi fer daari onderzoek was five hundred run.
So, ndien daa kuzenyi department, apo ndan iwa i documents, esin, esin i qualify saio, to qualify in order to continue with i grant. But it so happened that kuji kliniek ya se Pal, bavela, but i TRC time is gone. Eh 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 kliniek eh eh Pal.
Well, I went to a clinic in Pal eh in order to get the assistance, but they said eh the time or the period of the TRC has been closed.
Ke tu na kliniek togegon, maar dus tuman may geset dat die tijdberg van die Wahrheits- en Versunningskomisie afgeluubed.
So, i tetu gutige in dia feila o kubekake gangokfunisa umdanawam, aklebesale i educate hin yeke.
It means that my strides to continue to educate my children in order to finish their studies, those strides are failing.
En dit betekent no dat my pogings om my kanerse opvoeding te kan befoons, dat dit missluket.
Kuitala, laka health department i is better les nesimbo, so guti klari sha abandu as dead person, dingas noba i paramedics lenza lonre because I'm one of the victims zalondule.
Yo, on the side of the Department of Health, there is a common trend whereby the hospital normally declare a person as being dead and I'm one of the victims, especially on the side of paramedics.
Eh, bij die hospitaals daa gebrak dat mensen ver, dood verklar word en dat word veral der paramedisi gedun en ek was okes lachofer van daar imas brak.
So, kwenze ka indoba ban tate following day, ban tumeliki operation eh George is in dia bangaze, but sektua binsolegile, wat wat wat. So, klanfika eh George da fu mani operationi, then danama klingesfubeni katwa I'm unfit to to work.
It so happened that one day they took me to a hospital in George and they made a mistake to declare me as dead and after that they made a pronouncement that I'm not fit for work.
Eh, halet may opa stadion na hospitaal in George geneem en daart hale fout gemaak, ke stude daad dood verklar en.
Sorry, korrekret, what's that? They declared me dead and then?
Ja, but after the operation swa.
Ja, ja, ke stund dood verklar na die operatie.
So, nda, ben di, ndanama klingesfubeni, so, ngelit klasakus opfumut automatiwa in dia fori training because ben di undergroundi, katwa in di unfit ba libeli tuni, but ama, okle khabati, I'm fit to go to work. But it's better sustain the unfit, okle khabati in the fit, then I go for a training of a soldier, katwa in di unfit to continue.
Before eh Tata Nelson Mandela was released from jail, eh I was still an underground operative. As a result, during those periods, I sustained some wires on my chest. The hospital declared me that I'm not, I'm unfit to work as a soldier. But on the other hand, the doctor said I qualify to have a work opportunity.
Eh, in die tijd van Nelson Mandela so frelaten.
Eh, sorry, what? Before the release of?
Before, before Tata Mandela was released, eh, he was still in underground.
Ja, dae basak noch onan, ani ona grond gewes in na die tijd. Is daa ook verklar dat ik nie geskuk is om om werk te verrug nie.
So, ndi shellen di unemployed, di sakranwa i imali TRC, but kuji koliksam en dan di sebenze na so underground, sabisona zinger qualify because of pick and choose of my comrades. And then as a result, I share my money amongst the comrades because they were having a problem that time.
Eh, I, 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 I do have money that I receive from the TRC. As a result, some other comrades are unemployed, but I, I, I do make sure that I share what I get with them.
Eh, ke wel biki geld van die VVK gekrei, maar daas van my formaluche komrade wat werklos is en ke tu ook van die geld met alage deal.
So, ndaban e problem ne family am, but that I was not struggling to get money. It is just a bonus because I was fighting to liberate abandaba supele, that's what we were in.
My main purpose back then was to liberate the country back then.
Eh, my work tool was om om die lande befreid des tijds.
So, kuja yonge londo le, ben patika ga bigi department get department, different banchen jek twan maleki le, yo valele, tuk tuk na tala, kandia gamas palak twan dim tala fori age, I couldn't get a job. Sinsishe, ben di suangapa ngapa, as a result, I decided to stop lande because it's just eh, my certificate of honour is just an honourment to remind me about the apartheid situation to me.
I do have a certificate of honour, but that certificate of honour does not do any favour or does not bring anything from the table. I've been running left, right and centre and I've been also arrested. So, my situation is just as bad as it is.
Ke tu eh, eer certificaat gekrei met die dienste wat ek be, die bevrijding strijk gedunet, maar dit set nie kosop di tafel nie en konet nie werk VVK nie en dit is my problem.
So, ben di tayla okuti okokala ku minister of health, aijonge lendo ngikulumile in di tetile, ku minister of social development, aijonge lendo di choi about le grant and I do have a reference from kuji the TRC.
I do have investments from the TRC. I would like to ask the minister of health to consider what I have just mentioned and also the minister of social development to also consider what I have just mentioned.
Eh, ke wel biki belachings van die VVK geld, maar ek wil toch die minister van gesondheid en van maatskapelijke ontwikkeling frau om aandacht te gehe aan dit wat ek geset.
So, ofumaan so guti klasjes, sibene problem ne mbilo, klasja is bestele, sine kwa i kompral, kutwa is agiveke saikota ukulangu, kutwa is agiveke saio.
When we go to hospital, they just give us kompral pills and then they say we must come back the next following week.
As ons hospitaal to gun, kialenet for ons painpala kompral tablette en se ons mmofohne wertwerkom.
So, ndabono guti, is system le weisbe nsaikutinje basbulale because ukulangu, unikwe itet ekute, ube ukula ngao lumsusu.
I found that the system is so suppressive because if you are sick now, you must get an urgent attention now.
Eh, nek fulla dat dabei ona drukende stelsel is van as je sic is, dan moet je endlag dringend aandacht krei, die moet verzorg word.
I thank you.
Engos.
Bahiranki.
Thank ex-political prisoner datu Nkossana, eh, layakinto iya kwaskokwa i. I political, zainika u deputy, chairperson of council of provinces. Jenga ngogi, apa emva ku officials, ubekke yonge lendo kuinyene conduct numbers zako. Amacho nomkonre sisi, siawabonga ngobasilapanje, missebe nziawo. There's no way we can undermine that force, engos. Ndolande lai.
Guzolile kama, iseni mkuoto.
Zolile toto?
My name is Solol, Sololile Toto.
Tinguapa eh George, Tembaletu, Watlevan.
I am from Watlevan, Tembaletu, eh George.
Ke tu van wakeauf, bei Tembaletu, van George, bei George.
Di zo melaa itanelo, eli les mbilo, i kliniek ukuto.
I am here standing for the division, sections of the clinics.
Sine kliniek yo kiwayo pa Tembaletu, kwa kukufika kueto Tembaletu, kwa kuko nineteen eighty-six.
Where the clinic that was being built at Tembaletu.
Da was a kliniek wat gebouw is in Tembaletu.
Eighty-six when we arrived there.
In nineteen sixty-six, tu ons daar angekomit.
Umta mo wokslala kwa bandu, ue wakula, kula ndau, wosithala kuyo.
The number of people have grown in the area where we are staying.
En de, die getalit ba togeneem in die gebied waar ons no blay.
Koda ue ofumaan se gutindonoko bana abandu ba ke bakteswa ba permane, baba bini, ka ikle kula ndau, wosithala kuyo.
But you will notice that it so happened that only two people in the area where we are staying had ever been employed there as clerks.
Eh, maar mens sal opleid dat net twee mensen wat da blay in die gebied is ooit als clerke angestel.
Ego amen gwerk tresan di kolezi, le bakresi wabandu, but ilishwa isina luklandau.
In short, as time goes on, it happened that people were employed in that area. But we are faced with an unfortunate situation in the area where we are staying.
Eh, da is mensen een dienst geneem in die gebied, maar ons het te maken met de ongelukkige situatie in die gebied waar ons blay.
I kliniek laye, tu inga di sis kolo sofunse abanduana, pasis ukreit eh.
Our clinic, the way it operates, it appears as if it is just a fly by night. it appears as if it is just a fly-by-night school where children are taught in a house and hairy manner, past the standard, go on.
And by the clinic, it seems as if it's just a matter of life where people are not employed.
Kukaswa abandu ba kutuka shabata, twebasi wekinda uza bandu beban. Basi wekinda uza bandu bamshop.
They employ people after employing these people. They would be removed, taken to colored areas and white areas to go and work there.
They let people in the area, but they later let them work in clothes areas to work there.
Singas, kenokwam samis isloanyana, isalapakwadan isloanyana isna azukig.
We do not know whether we are a flock of animals staying there, but one believes that even animals do have their own doctors that look after them.
But it's not for us to be dead, because it's handled there. But we think ourselves dead, um, for a little bit.
Okwesbi, nikune feshi, nusista opetepakwisa glad clinic.
Secondly, there is a tendency, or what I would call a fashion, that the sister in charge in that clinic is having or applying a method or system.
It's a system.
And that's why I'm here. With murder, I get my from the work material that they pass by the clinic. What is this to pass?
Yoku tibamgela abandabai save ending, meaning singers be well. Ngumte toka holumento kanyo, ngumte towa kasuka nawildinwa.
She tells us that they only accept seventy patients per day. One is lost, we do not know. Is this a governmental rule or decision? Or is she bringing it from her own house?
And there is said to us that there are not seventy patients per day handled there. But it's not, it's not bad. It's not what the woman is saying.
It seems as if ngoki bisindokokbana is CDC, but we don't know bamthambi, Lkamaliti CDC, ndi saben sindwe, nikliaklinikipaya.
It seems like they refer to a CDC, but we do not know this name CDC. What is its actual purpose? Or for what purpose is it being used at that clinic?
And they talk a lot of things, but it's not glad we were there. And yeah, what does it mean?
Baslegas ndi afuna ndokokbana kutkalisal ndonokokbana le clinic ya setembaletu, i triple isha i clinics, as in means, because we've got in eyes, na i Plattenberg Bay, I muscle bay. But you will never found ndonokokbana i clinics, as in eyes, na Plattenberg Bay, si safari sanjenka la clinic, abandubaslabeni ukakusazula, kute kubetokyo vali, have passport.
There are various clinics, eyes na muscle bay, Plattenberg bay, but our clinic, people are suffering. They are not well attended. One does not know what is actually the problem with them at this clinic.
There is a clinic, it's in Plattenberg bay, in Muscle bay, where the patients are handled good, but medical clinic, we don't know, but all the work material is not.
Si afuna kimi ngala sela basoni chwanzeng, baseni lafankubani, sison, nisison dezi le kuti. Okwesbi, ndi afunu kutu kunge lishwa nange thamsa. Si spalile imbaliloan, sapalilo long, of which onatungumpati paya kweza clinic sipaya chujuti. No Stevens, abakwabanabapati, paya kweza clinic sipaya George. Dina yoyomba leloano apa ndi peteyongu.
Honorable members, you are now here, we do need your assistance. I have copies of letters that I've written to Stevens and Low. They are in charge of that clinic there over at George and I do possess copies of these minutes with me now.
I thank you for giving us the opportunity. And I get a copy here from the paper that I read on the clinic.
Si telanjimpendulo esimpuchane, kutwaninga kunji.
We expect a short response. What are we supposed to do when we are faced with a critical situation like the one that I have outlined here?
And we are shocked what is to do when we are confronted with a critical situation, is what I've just pictured.
Okwesbi, isine clinic eh kuyasa, esandukwakiwa, I thought it's a word fifteen, but the first.
Secondly, we are the recently built kuyasa clinic. I think it is a word fifteen if I am not making a mistake.
And that's the long building clinic, I think that's in Wake 15, as I'm not, as I'm not my name.
Kunge lishwa, la kliniki isponsi we umas palak and ikoni kona in dima aidlali layo.
Unfortunate, we had received a sponsor to build that clinic, but as far as I'm concerned, I am not aware of any contribution that had been played by the municipality.
It's been said that the border clinic was built, but I'm not aware of any contribution that the municipality made to the clinic.
Onobangelbandi cho akoma yesapa.
The reason for saying this is because they do not have medicines in that clinic to supply.
And the reason why I say this is that they don't have medicines in the clinic to work.
Abandu basuka ka klinik, umdu ayegutwa uyaku, lunindueti le kutu yesa li kapa, amba peke Tembaletu.
People are going to that clinic, being ill, and it would be said, we don't have any medication here, go over to Tembaletu.
And six people came to the clinic to be handled. And what they said, we don't have medicines for them, come to Tembaletu.
Okokbaku le ngule, kui ikube ka, yo pa kulamsowa se Tembaletu, kulo lasoba. Abon abandababa leklayongaba, bilisiba kanga ni lekala.
If things are going on as I have mentioned in that Tembaletu area, it is clear people of importance at that area are those that I have already mentioned before.
And as that was the thing that I read, then it's not an issue in Tembaletu. It's not a matter of people who are handled there.
Kuzabandono si valus clinic, ngoba aslulu tebanduin payxali.
It would be better off to close down these clinics because they are of no assistance to the community.
And so better we are from the clinic, that's right, because none of the communities got it.
Okwesbi, nogokribela, ndizautelu kuti kune communication.
Secondly and lastly, I ask they will use communication.
We will talk about Dominica.
Una ababandu baslaziswa ngutrigapa, abateta iluimi elinga tetwa ngaba bandubakut.
There are those people who are being there with the doctors who are speaking foreign language to our people in the country.
There is people in the clinic where both the local dialects speak with the people who visit the clinic.
Na layo indodizautelokba ekichongwe.
I also ask that this should also be attended to.
And I would like to ask that this should be addressed.
Okokutribela, si zauteluumpatiswa A and B, ayosola esaklinik, ngola sobosimengaalo, nan ngol sobo ndite tangaalo, indwenzika yo pa.
We will ask the minister to go and inspect those clinics to ascertain whether what I am saying is actually exactly as I have put the case forward.
And I ask the minister to ask for the evidence in the clinic to prove that what I've said is true.
Eh, nalama ku epu, beni funuwa nikesela, ngobingata tuken, yeni ngoba beni funumpatiswa siku sak. This is umnike fancy.
Even these documents that I have with me, I wanted to hand them over, but there is this tendency, these documents get confused or lost. I wanted to hand it over to the minister directly.
I would like to take the documents with me, right straight to the minister, because it seems to me people are easy to work.
And goes.
I thank you.
And goes, beni tuba, banbaku tikan kengelanen, tiakela umtu makabuzo, umbuzo. Kobango kabandu baya puma, banyi ba pume benga buza because umtu only one, ufnutu by our etet. Did kala lusa onge na ngoku abuzo, umbuzo, ani komnye because ngoku ndilindenja, abandababi, kweestha tulebe shalapant, and goes.
I am Ben Matali from Muscle bay.
I guess Ben Matalo from Muscle bay.
Enga ge ami clinic.
I have a problem with the clinic.
I get the program by the clinic.
Anzo tetaka kulumna.
I do not have much to say.
I don't have much to say.
Koto agen, beni umbuzo amnglonasisi.
Eh, here is my question, madam.
And here is my question.
For three months, the safari, dinga fumana mayesa. For three months in safari, fumana mayesa, chronic.
It's three months now that I've been suffering, I did not get my chronic medication.
I could not.
Ngoku gen ndi afunu was, ba di final ba di, di suiche ba ni na.
I could not for three months, no chronic medicine.
I now want to institute my claim, I wonder who can I sue.
I could not for three months, no chronic medicine. And I would like to ask, why should I tell them?
I three months, yonge kutu ya mayesa. I, 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 central government, I tumelangi tenda, I muscle bay.
Three months, the central government did not send a tender to muscle bay.
For three months, the central government did not send a tender to muscle bay.
Ngoku ge, gen tele safari ngayo, ndienda ya na kuma social worker.
Now, the way I have suffered, I even approached social worker.
Now, kuku konguzo, ufunubuzo, by social worker, maususu bu, bu social.
Now that I'm so young, that I'm a social worker.
Is social worker, maususu ikombasin, kusalan doon.
I wonder a social worker, if you have removed compassion, with what are you left now?
And I would like to ask.
Ngoba na zogang is kwa zunedha, ngoba beni funedhuandje.
I would like to ask the local worker, if you don't feel any more, what have you done?
They could not, could also not help me because I was expecting to get assistance from them.
They didn't help me, although I expected that they would be there.
Ya kolisa, ndisogansandres, ni kati, i, i point zambesindatuwa.
I apologize, I'm not going to say a lot, but I had three points to address here.
First, tuile, umbuzo.
I ask for forgiveness, I won't say, but that's not the three points that I want to call.
My third point is a question.
My third point is.
Eh, jumping ya se muscle bay is pagat eh asla. Eh, jumping. Eh, pagat eh asla.
The jumping, jumping is at asla inside muscle bay.
There is a story about asla and muscle bay.
Eh, muscle bay, kwa non ngaba, kufuwa ya ha, kueloksi.
Non ngaba township in muscle bay, they are keeping, they keep pigs in the township.
What, akinjoben, ufunuku iso, lamnu kwa pay eh asla. Doofan, this is a highway park, wean, 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 wean pasam isanam, and fumanis kuti, sayapi inspectors, zoganyan, pay muscle bay.
The paving of that area is not healthy, I feel it being a distance away. I wonder what has happened, where to has the inspectors gone at muscle bay?
There is a township in muscle bay where the farce will be and I don't know what inspectors have been there. I can't think that it's healthy because the farce is there.
Ukolo, ukolo, litini kama, le clinic ingena mayesa.
And you what that?
Litini kama le clinic.
Alma. Alma, eh.
Is alma.
Kawa non ngaba.
Et non ngaba township.
Ja, ama yesa, si fumanisi, lukuti ge, bulaweindweni, ama yesa, bulawe la N I, enzwa ngumzualedi, le. Abandwalapa bay, amaneswalapa, oka no doctor, bay rejectala, lukusu bay oppose. Ngoku tinasia safari ge ngoka ap.
The schemes introduced by honorable Muzualedi, our doctors decide they reject these schemes and we end up being the sufferers as a result of this.
The doctors.
Nkule, rekokbaga, ndiakala, eh muscle bay abandabadala ba pelilen, dimone seven seventy.
Tell him that I am really complaining con all the elderly people at muscle bay are dead. I am the only one who is seventy-seven years of age.
I guess you are living in the bay area in muscle bay, I guess you are seventy-seven years old.
I'm about to.
And goes to get that.
Nansya obkwele poendima.
Here is my last point.
Oh, doctor apa, uni geprescripshin, ye fana kalo.
The doctor there is giving a prescription, that is not a proper prescription, he's just writing or playing around.
The doctor gave a prescription for me, but it's not a legal prescription, he's not playing.
And goes to that as a feeling.
Ngoku ge, abandwa nga pila kandja, abandbenga ya, sekutupunaba seven seventy, ama yesa. Ngoba la, la, la clinic ay transformanga.
How do you expect people to survive? Are they having proper medication? And there are no properly staff members working there, gone amai.
At the clinic, there is no qualified personnel here. Thank you.
Bela ge ngoku ta. Last person.
Um, umdu krela. Oh, krela.
Last person. It klasalia sia, ufavu funeka betes kabilaya.
First, time is against us, five o'clock, we should be away.
My name is George Meyer.
My name is Quas Meyer.
You're Quas Meyer.
George Meyer, sorry. George Meyer.
George Kamaya.
I was from Deisel Dorb.
I'm from Deisel Dorb.
You was a Deisel.
I get that a question in the health department.
I have a question to put to the Department of Health.
Ndinumbuzo kuisabelas mbi lo.
Two years ago, we met as a community with the superintendent of the hospital.
Two years ago, we as a community met with the superintendent of the hospital.
Iminyakemibine zulayo tinanjegoluntu, satibana, noktigawonga melayo wasispejale.
We asked them to have more personnel in Deisel Dorb to be added for us people, to improve the quality of services.
Satimakongeswe abandu abapangela ya Deisel konukuse kupuktule imzinga loksevenza, ebandui.
Our people need to be transported to the hospital in ambulance.
Abandu be tu ba suswa eh Deisel ba si suku si betele, sala pecholoeni, ba zo knyangwa.
Where our people are in need of Deisel Dorb, where the ambulance and ambulance come. But the point I want to make is that we want Deisel Dorb to be a day hospital that can serve twenty-four, seven, forty-four year people and our people.
Thank you very much. Let me thank you everybody who have given this chance of posing questions to the panels. Now I'm going to give back to the front table to respond to those questions. Over to you, to the panel.
Yes, we would like to say that referring to our father's question in terms of the political prisoners, I think there is a process that one can go to ensure that you get the necessary social support in order to bring up your children as such. In terms of health, I just want to say that if you go through the necessary evaluations and through the SASSA process, we are sure that you will be able to get help. In terms of what the compro tablets are concerned, we just want to say that it is not policy that our people should be treated in a way that shows them that there is no concern. And if you are reaching any of our facilities, wherever you are, and they are treating in a way that you feel that they don't care for you, please take down my number. I am going to repeat, I'm going to call the number and please take the number down and give me a call if anybody treats you in a way that makes you feel inferior when you visit a clinic, particularly when you are not feeling well. My number is 079 958 8392. Then with Mr. Toto's request, Mr. Toto, let me assure you that in our medical sphere and in terms of our health policy, nobody, but nobody should treat you like a fly-by-night. And if you feel that any institution is treating you like they don't know what they are doing, please take down my number again, 079 958 8392. I need to also assure you that medical staff are appointed by appointment system and they are thoroughly checked in terms of the work and their abilities and how they act in terms of their works. The other question was CDC and that basically just means that that particular clinic that you visit hasn't got a doctor and a pharmacy. So we would like to ask you that if you have a problem with medicine and a doctor, please just go down the road to Conville and there will be somebody there that will take care of your needs in terms of medicine and a doctor. Then the other thing I would like to just address is the issue of poor services. If you come to any place where you feel that we deliver an inferior services, please use that number and give us a call because there is no way that the provincial health will allow any person that works within our fraternity to deliver a poor service to our people. Then the other thing I just need to point out in terms of the clinic that you are visiting there, that like I said earlier, that is a clinic that is in joint venture with the municipality and provincial. So if there are issues that you feel that are not addressed at that clinic, please let us know. Then I would just like to tell you that in this place is officials from the minister's office, that if you want to give those letters in, they are here today and we would gladly accept those letters. Then I would like to just point out something that is not so clear for us. It's difficult in terms of the details of the officials that you are referring to. But if it's in your letter, then we will definitely cover that particular situation. Then there is the issue where you have spoken about the fact that there are 70 people that are allowed. Yes, there is a process at this stage in the Western Cape to deliver good and proper services, effective services. And often we are instituting measurements to see how it works so that we can help our patients and our customers. So if you have come to an institution where they said only 70, it is not policy, but we are trying to use the measurement in order to ensure that everybody gets proper care. Then I would just like to refer quickly to the issue in Mossel Bay. It is at this stage a fact that there's an international challenge in terms of chronic medicines and certain drugs. It's not only national, but it's also international. But there is a process where there are certain interventions taken to ensure that you receive your medicine in time. But please don't hesitate, just take the responsibility, go to the hospital manager or to the clinic manager where you are and just speak to that person about that particular situation. But I'm sure that there will be a solution to that difficulty very soon. As far as the pigs are concerned, I think the municipality, the district, Eden District has already started a process with the municipality to ensure that that issue of the pigs are addressed. Then the state of the building and so on, I'm sure Dr. Marshall and his team have taken notice of that fact. We should not have facilities that is in a poor condition. So we will definitely look into that as well. Then George, in terms of your request for more staff, I heard what you said. It's clear at this moment that the superintendent has started the process to make sure that his service is better. The other reason why he is now facing this is that we are sure that he will succeed in these problems in terms of the transport, the ambulance service, the 24-hour service, the day hospital and the mobile clinic. I'm sure all the officials who works with that has heard your plea today. It is our desire that you will get the best service possible when you walk into hospital. If ever you walk into hospital where you get no service or there is poor service or you're not happy when you leave there, or you're still feeling that they did not treat you well in terms of taking care of your situation, then please just pick up that phone, phone me, I will phone the managers and we will make sure that your problem is addressed. We are focused in this district to ensure that we deliver the best medical services that you can get. Thank you. Thank you.
May I request that the interpreters just interpret my responses? I think it's important that everybody hears.
The interpreter must be Yahi Reda.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to indicate to the gentleman who raised the issue of the TRC. I don't actually see him here, but I thought it's important for everybody to hear nonetheless.
by speaking the truth to the nation, but also to allow for a process of forgiveness on the part of victims.
which was described as a crime against humanity.
victim of apartheid a decent amount of money that would allow them to live a life that is fulfilled for the rest of their lives, which we didn't have, it would still not be enough money to compensate for the crime of apartheid that was visited on the victims.
Even if our country had enough money to fund the efforts of apartheid, and to the extent that all of our lives were sacrificed, then it would still not be enough money to compensate for the crime of apartheid that was visited on the victims.
Even if our country had enough money to fund the efforts of apartheid, and to the extent that all of our lives were sacrificed, then it would still not be enough money to compensate for the crime of apartheid that was visited on the victims.
There were many, many generations of people who have lived and died and who had struggled and suffered under the apartheid system.
There was a lot of people who had been slaughtered during apartheid.
We must never forget their contribution and we must never disrespect the effort and the struggle that they waged to get us to a point where as a country we are free and democratic.
We must not forget the people who have contributed and we must not neglect their respect for their contribution.
Notwithstanding all of that, it was felt that it was necessary to have a truth and reconciliation process in order to bridge the gap between our past and our future.
Despite all of that, it was felt that it was necessary to have a truth and reconciliation process in order to bridge the gap between our past and our future.
Those people who were tortured, who suffered bodily disability due to torture, who were incarcerated, who were killed, and those families of those people who were killed by the security forces at the time, were all given a platform at the TRC.
The people who had suffered bodily disability due to torture, who were incarcerated, who were killed, and those families of those people who were killed by the security forces at the time, were all given a platform at the TRC.
Those victims who were found to indeed be victims who had suffered in that way were given what we call symbolic reparations. They were given a sum of money as a symbolic gesture towards reparations.
The people who had been sacrificed during apartheid have gained a symbolic right to the unredeemed who have been sacrificed.
Those victims who were found to indeed be victims who had suffered in that way were given what we call symbolic reparations. They were given a sum of money as a symbolic gesture towards reparations.
The amounts that were given were small in relation to the sacrifices that they had made, but it was a symbolic gesture to enable us to pay homage to their losses.
The cost of the compensation and the compensation for the compensation of the compensation was small compared to the compensation that they had made. But it was felt that it was important to have a symbolic gesture of forgiveness for them.
Our country was also aware that the amounts given to the victims who were identified at the TRC was not meant to sustain those victims for the rest of their lives.
There was also a sense that the cost of the compensation for the compensation was not meant to sustain those victims for the rest of their lives.
In addition, it needs to be recognized that the majority of the population of the country was disenfranchised and were essentially, broadly speaking, victims of apartheid too.
And it is also important that the majority of the population is aware of the impact of the compensation for apartheid.
In 1994, most of our people were not able to access free housing from government.
In 1994, the majority of the people were not able to access free housing from government.
There was no free quality education, there was no free health services extended to literally within five kilometers or 10 kilometers of where people lived. Primary healthcare has been invested in and our biggest challenge in this regard is to improve the services that people enjoy out of these efforts over 20 years.
There was no free healthcare services and health services for the majority of the population.
Today, the indigent people of our country can access free housing, they can access free basic electricity and can access free water as well.
Today, if our children wish to go to university, if they are bright and they get good marks and they want to study further at university, but we are poor, we can access assistance through the National Students' Financial Aid Scheme, which was not available in 1994 or before that.
Today, if our students want to go to university and come from a privileged household that cannot finance, then they have to have access to the national student financial funds.
Today, a major portion of government's funding is directed at social grants, whether it's pensions for the old, whether it's child grants for young people, or whether it's the disabled grants for disabled people.
Today, a major portion of government's funding is directed at social grants, whether it's pensions for the old, whether it's child grants for young people, or whether it's the disabled grants for disabled people.
Today, a major portion of government's funding is directed at social grants, whether it's pensions for the old, whether it's child grants for young people, or whether it's the disabled grants for disabled people.
And these stand as a memorial to those people who have lost their lives in the struggle. And as we strive to improve our services, we are doing so in their memory.
And that is a memorial for the people who have brought compensation for apartheid and we want all of our people to improve their lives.
Finally, let me just remind everybody, those members of the public who are still here, who are respectful enough to still be here, let me remind you that to access these services, you need an ID document. And to obtain an ID document, you need a birth certificate. Please advise your family, your friends, your community that it is important to register children within 30 days of birth, to get 16-year-olds to apply for their ID documents and keep those documents safe.
Lastly, I want to remind the people who are still here, who have enough respect for the process, that when you have access to all the services that I have now, then you have an ID document required. And to have an ID document required, you have a birth certificate required. So you have to remember how important it is for your child to have a birth certificate and then as soon as your child is 16 years old, you have to have an ID document, an ID document.
Finally, if there are any adults in your community who still do not have ID books, ID documents or ID cards, please urge them to visit their nearest Home Affairs Office before the end of this year because the late registration of birth for adults will be coming to an end at the end of this year. Thank you very much.
Lastly, I want to remind your friends or your neighbors, who have no ID documents, to remember that it is important to have ID documents.
That costs for birth certificates and you have to do it before the end of the year.
Because in the periods where you have the documents and some problems, you have to do it before the end of the year.
Then I thank you the panel who was responding to the concerns of the community. I thank you all. I propose that we close this session till tomorrow. Bon voyage. Thank you.